For Brandell Logan to come in. If anybody wants to speak tonight, our town clerk, Chris Sampson, is going to hand out the forms. Just sign your name and your address and we'll be able to speak.
How far?
They're free.
Public hearing, people can speak for as long as they want. We would ask that people try to keep it to five minutes. And if you want to speak again later, you'll be able to speak again later. If you spoke at the first public hearing, you certainly can speak again at this public hearing. And as we said last meeting, we will not be taking any action on this this evening. We'll probably have another public hearing as well. So people will be able to be heard. I'd like to ask our town clerk, Christian Sampson, to call the roll.
Councilman Almond. Councilman Friedman.
Here.
Councilwoman Charles.
Here.
Councilman Withers. Supervisor St. Lawrence.
Here. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Brandell Logan Charles to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, a continuation of a public hearing. And as I mentioned, this public hearing will be continued again to January, at the beginning of January. We have a Phase Two, supplement Phase Two questions that we've, that our planner, planner has asked of the applicant. We'll have our planner talk about that a little bit. And then the applicant will have to come back with a Phase Three, their reply to that. And we'll have another public hearing on that as well. I just want people to know that Deputy Supervisor Withers had to be in New Jersey tonight, and Councilman Almond is flying back from Los Angeles. So his flight was delayed. So they will not be here, but this will, this is on video, and they will be able to watch this and be able to hear. And I guarantee you, they will watch this to hear everyone's comments. So with that, once again, the ground rules are, you can speak for as long as you'd like. We'd like to limit it to five minutes. If you need to speak longer than that, a couple more minutes, there's no problem. We're not going to put the clock on you. But we'd like to get everybody in a timely way to be able to speak. If you then have more things that you want to ask, you certainly can, or want us to put on the record, you're welcome to do that. And we will stay here as long as people want to speak. With that, I'll ask our town attorney, Michael Klein, to put anything into the record that has come in since the last public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. We've received a few documents, which I'll mark as exhibits and write into the record. Marked into evidence is Exhibit Number Seventeen will be a letter dated October 27, 2014, from County of Rockland Sewer District Number One. Exhibit Eighteen will be a letter dated January 10, 2012, from Stacy M. Jensen of the Army Corps of Engineers. Exhibit Number Nineteen will be an air quality assessment report dated October 20, 2014, from Potenta Environmental Consultants, LLC. Exhibit Number Twenty is a noise impact assessment report dated October 20, 2014, from Potenta Environmental Consultants, LLC. Exhibit Number Twenty-One is a proposed comprehensive plan amendment draft dated December 8, 2014. And finally, Exhibit Number Twenty-Two is a traffic impact study, last revised May 30, 2014, by Harry Baker and Associates. So that concludes the exhibits that we've received thus far.
Okay. And as I mentioned, counsel, we were, when we hold this meeting over, it will be to January. Our next meeting is on the 18th of this month. It's during the day. It's our police commission meeting and town board meeting, and we want it to be, want it to be in the evening. So we'll hold it off into January. Our regular scheduled meeting of December 24th has been canceled. So with that, I think we will have the applicant come up and answer some, I guess, some questions and say whatever they want about the project. And then we'll have our planner from Frederick P. Clark come up. So, Mr. Carvin.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Members of the town council, good evening. Not to repeat everything that we discussed in the, in the last instance. So I really didn't, I know there's going to be additional comments, and I know that Mr. Wang has a report, and we will submit a written response to all of the issues that you and your colleagues identify. But I do think that it is important off the bat to just make it very clear that there are no six-bedroom apartments, there are no five-bedroom apartments, there are no four-bedroom apartments. We have floor plans here, which reflect the size of the units. The units are around 1,200 square feet and contain most of them three bedrooms. And there'll be two-bedroom, I think maybe have a two-bedroom model also. But those plans are available for your review. And it has been needlessly divisive and inflammatory to run all over Rockland County claiming that thousands and thousands of people are going to invade some piece of property based on flawed assumptions. The environmental analysis that was prepared by the, that Mr. Clark, that Mr. Wang, your planner, recommended accounted for very, very high build-out conditions for the purposes of making sure that the drainage and other analysis was enough, and the same that the traffic analysis was enough. So there were assumptions that were built into that to make sure that the analysis was valid. But I can't speak for the other property owner that's seeking a change in the zoning. But with respect to the application of Muncie lumber, the maximum number of bedrooms in any unit that we have proposed is three. So the four, four-bedroom?
Two in the apartment could be four.
Up to four, I'm sorry. Up to four. So the notion of these massive six-bedroom apartments that has been paraded out there, I don't know if it's intentionally not accurate, but it's not accurate. And unfortunately, that assumption has created a basis for concern, and there's always concern about a project, and that's legitimate, but, but you have to measure that concern based on the information. And unfortunately, that projection has been the basis for various comments that have come in from other agencies, and it's based on a false premise. So I think it's very important, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, to recognize upfront that that is the case, and that the projections that have been made based on fantastic bedroom numbers are just, that's just, that's just not the case, and the board should, the board should be aware of that. And rather than getting involved in the political propaganda, we should look at the project itself very carefully. In response to some of the feedback that we heard at the last hearing, Mr. Ziegler did undertake some revisions. There was a notion expressed in terms of coming into with a new zone and how that would affect existing bulk zoning standards. And Mr. Ziegler will explain how all of that has been rectified as well, as well as a full discussion of the, of the drainage. But we have been asked in the, as I understand it, if the board adopts the Part Two, to provide additional information about the drainage plan. There's additional information that was requested from us with respect to traffic circulation of the roadway. Mr. Baker, our traffic engineer, is here, if you want to hear from him directly, but we'll be happy to provide that information as well. And there was also a request from the town for us to submit a, a map which showed the density. There are three municipalities that intersect in this particular area, the town of Ramapo, the village of Spring Valley, and the town of Clarkstown, and to line out the densities that exist in those various neighborhoods. And as we touched on briefly at the last hearing, the density proposed here is consistent with densities that have been supported in all of those adjacent municipalities, including the village of Spring Valley, as well as the town of Clarkstown. So the density that's recommended here would be consistent with other zoning designations in municipalities that, but the town of Ramapo. But I would ask, with your permission, Mr. Supervisor, if Mr. Ziegler could speak to the design changes that we have made to try to begin to accommodate those concerns. But given that, I anticipate we're going to hear additional comments tonight, and that we're going to be getting a written Part Two, I think that the bulk of our response is probably best reserved for a January meeting.
Okay, and that's fair. But I would think it would be important to not just have Mr. Ziegler, but have your drainage and your traffic people make a short presentation as well, because there may be people here that weren't at the first, first meeting.
Sure, sure. Why don't we have Mr. Ziegler go first, then Mr. Jackson can discuss the drainage, and Mr. Baker will-
Thank you.
-touch on the traffic. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Hi, Dave Ziegler from Atzel, Nasher &amp; Ziegler. We're doing the site design for the Pascac Ridge. And in front of the board right now is a footprint of the units. There's some confusion is because each unit, we're counting as a rental or a home. So if you look at the box, there's two. There's a rental on the bottom, and then two, two floors of the primary home. So there would be 105 duplexes. So we're going to change the wording in this so that we can tell you that there's 105 duplexes, and each duplex will have two units in it. And the two units will be set up like this board shows, with the lower unit being the rental, with a possibility of two bedrooms. Then the next two floors, floor and a half, would be the main owner, the main family, and that would be three beds, three bedrooms with a possibility of four. So it's a total of six bedrooms in a duplex times 105 units. The plan that we first designed is this plan where we were extending a Spring, Springbrook Road. Springbrook Road from the town line to Pascac has no other access.
So just, just to be clear of what you just said.
Yes.
So on 105 of the duplexes that would be there, 105 of them would be two-bedroom? And about 100?
No, there's 105 duplexes, and in a duplex, you would have a possibly four-bedroom and a possibly two-bedroom for a maximum of six bedrooms.
Whoa, 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 whoa. No, 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 no. This does not work this way, folks. No, no. It doesn't work this way. If you're going to speak out of turn, then you're going to leave. Okay? It's, it's not going to be that way. Just, just, I think you just said what I just said. You're saying that the duplexes, there are 105 of them, what you're, what you're calling these duplexes.
That's correct.
And in those duplexes, there's, there are, there's one unit that is 1,200 square feet, and then there's a second unit, which is the second and third floor, or four and a half, you called it.
Right.
That could have four bedrooms.
Right.
But the unit downstairs would have-
Two.
-two bedrooms. So in the total project that is, you're proposing of 210 units, 105 of them would be two bedrooms, and 105 of them would be three, or possibly four.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead.
When we first designed this project, we were under the assumption that the Springbrook should be brought through as a town road, and we were designing that from the Clarkstown line, which going out to, actually ending up near Pascac. And the design that we had and been studying with the planning board and back and forth with the planner showed that as a town road. And that town road, being such, cut the property in half that required variances on this layout that we had submitted after the last public hearing. There was quite a discussion about the town road being extended and not, not having it as a town road. The public wouldn't want to come through. So we are in the process of doing a new layout, which would make that a private drive with emergency access into the two spurs from Clarkstown. That way, if there was an emergency between the town lines, there would be a possibility to go through, but there wouldn't be any possibility for common traffic to go back and forth.
And not to get too much into your planning, because I want you to, but just to be clear, are you saying then there would be a, a gate there with the knot spots that could only be utilized by-
Right.
-fire and ambulance?
Right.
Okay.
And then that would cut, cut down on, through traffic through Springbrook.
We did have a lot of people from Springbrook brothers spoke.
Right. And basically, if you take our plan, say the B neighborhood, and if you went south through Springbrook out to Pascac, that would be about .65 miles. If you leave neighborhood B and go out to Pascac and around, that ends up being about nine-tenths of a mile. But it's actually faster because it's a major road and not through a neighborhood. So with that, we've done a new plan, which we'll submit in the Part Three, and that will adhere to the current code and not require any variances, and it will stand on itself without having any other, look by any other board other than the planning board. So we'll change this plan, and that'll be part of our, Part Three for the seeker.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me, you want me to put your map up?
Jack, are you able to get those maps on the TV? Okay, good.
I'll just reiterate what I said in my previous presentation.
Just state your name for the order.
Leonard Jackson. There are three jurisdictions that cover the work on this site with regard to the flow and the runoff into the Pascac Brook. The Rockland County Drainage Agency, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation of the town of Ramapo. The regulations are almost the same, and it requires that the development of this project does not increase the peak rate of discharge onto the river. That means to avoid exacerbating any flooding problems on the Pascac Brook, we have to make sure that we don't increase the flooding or the discharge rate on the Pascac Brook. That's done through detention and other such measures. It was done before. As a matter of fact, the discharge rate was decreased from the site into the Pascac Brook. Just to put this into perspective, I'd like to throw out just a few numbers. We heard from someone who represented a town in, in New Jersey. And yes, everyone who lives along the Pascac Brook has to be concerned about flooding. But to put it in perspective, I'd like to point out that the, the area, the contributing drainage area in Rockland County onto the Pascac Brook is, here we are, is 6,774 acres. And of that 6,774 acres, approximately 30 of them are this site. So that's not to diminish the importance of providing a decrease in peak rate of discharge from the site, but what we have to consider to put it in perspective is, it's three out of 7,000, 30 out of 7,000 acres. It's three tenths of a percent. And we have to do our part in making sure that the discharge rate does not increase. Similarly, just at the site itself, we have a contributing drainage area of 1,047 acres, of which this site is 30 of them. And therefore, that's three and a thousandths, .03. We have to do our part in making sure that we don't increase the peak rate of discharge from our contribution. But our contribution, of course, is three thousandths of the flow approximately on the river. So I'd like to point out that we do our job, we will actually decrease, decrease the peak rate of discharge on the river. Of course, we can't decrease it that much because we just only have a fraction of the contributing drainage area. But we will handle our job the way we have to, to avoid a cumulative impact of development over the course of the years. And that's the purpose of the law, which requires no increase in discharge rate on the river. And that's it for this project.
I just wanted you to touch on one other thing. So the, we have a zero discharge runoff, which means that no more runoff can come off of a project after it's built than what it is presently in its present state. So you're saying that the runoff will be a decrease of what it is present?
It will be a decrease.
Would you just touch on any of the water quality?
Well, the water quality is, that's universal, actually. It's a New York State D E C requirement, and we have to treat the water quality. We actually, actually, we have to recharge some of the water into the ground, and we also have to treat it to assure that we don't decrease the quality of the water into the river. But those are standard issues. And of course, the water quality, well, it doesn't come up usually at public hearings, but yes, we have to do that. In addition to reducing the peak rate of discharge, we do have to make, make sure that we don't decrease the quality of the runoff from the site.
Thank you. Okay. And Mr. Carvin, is your traffic person here? Just state your name, please.
Harry Baker, Harry Baker &amp; Associates. You have to bear with me, I've been sick all week, so I apologize.
Going around.
I conducted a traffic study for this project. Obviously, with the changes that they've talked about tonight, we will go back and revise the study to deal with the new changes to the access points and so forth and so on. And the, the upshot is, is that we looked at the traffic during a typical weekday and also on a Sunday, midday afternoon. We counted existing traffic, looked at other projects that might be built in the area, as well as projected to traffic for this project. Based on the level of service, which is the operating condition of the intersections, when we looked both in the weekday and on the, on the Sunday, there was no change in the operating condition from the no bill to the bill, which is what you have to look at to determine whether there's an impact or not. But I will go back, excuse me, and make the changes that are necessary and see if, see if there's any changes to the results of the study. At this point, I would, I don't want to hazard a guess one way or the other.
Okay. And you're doing studies at times when school would be-
Yes, the traffic count-
During, during, when they'd be picking kids up from school.
Yeah, the traffic counts were done from seven to nine in the morning when all the buses, in fact, when we did the traffic count, we, we classified the vehicles as cars, trucks, and buses, so we know how many school buses there were making any of the movements at any of these intersections.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
And now we'll have our planner from Frederick P. Clark. Mr. Wang?
I don't know how many of you have ever walked this property. I would doubt that many have. It's almost impassable. There's all sites are prickly bushes. If you look at our cultural and archaeological expert, he came out, he looked like he'd been through a wringer. His, his clothes were all torn, the, the briars really tore him apart. It's a tough, tough site to go through. But just to give you the bearing, this is the high end, this is the low end. We have the right-of-way for the sewer, the Rockland County Sewer District's interceptor there. And when you look at the types of surrounding uses-
Can everybody hear him?
John, we speak into the- When you look at the-
Thank you.
-surrounding uses, you can see that there is a great transition from single-family on the east side to, you know, multifamily on the west side. But what it looks like from the inside, this is the, the mighty Pascac Brook. This was in the spring. The leaves had already come out, and there were, the flows were really pretty much a trickle. This was this fall, and you can see it's totally dry. So there's a great variability. The stream is not classified as being protected under D E C regulations. To give you more information on the character of the neighborhood, and I believe a picture's These are the apartments that are on Pascac Road. There's, I believe, about 20 units there total. These are the apartments above, on top on Slint Avenue, that directly are adjacent to the property. There's certainly a lot of maintenance associated with those items, with those units. This is the right-of-way for Orange and Rockland. The sewer line goes down below it. And then this is a good example of what the majority of the property looks like where it hasn't been developed. A lot of down trees, but fairly, you know, it could be filtered out. But you can see there's, there's a mixture of healthy and dead trees there, and that's pretty typical. So based upon that, we had to do analysis of what things we should be looking at in greater detail. And this is excerpt from the entire E A F. It's just the, the Part Two. The Part Two says, what are the things we want the applicant to look at in greater detail? So I'm going to read them to you. Let me take this out. Number one says, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning? And the two choices you get are, it's a moderate to large impact, or it's a small impact. And we've checked that it's a moderate impact, so we want them to address that. Will the proposed action result in a change or the intensity of use? We say that's a major impact, so we check that box for that one. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Potentially, yes. So we've checked that as a large. Will the proposed action have an impact on a critical environmental area? There's no one in the area, so we check no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic? We have traffic reports that indicate probably it hasn't, but just on the potential that it was, it was, we want to look at that in great detail, so we checked a moderate to large impact. Will the proposed use cause an increase of energy and fail to incorporate regional energy conservation or renewable uses? I think that's a smaller impact. I think that's a smaller impact, based upon the new energy standards we have for building codes. Building codes cover most of that, so I gave that a smaller, smaller impact. Will the proposed action impact public and private wells? Yes, it will affect public wells and water supply and waste water treatment. Yes, it will. So we have reports that will be done there, so we asked for additional information. Will the action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, aesthetic resources? We have a report that found nothing on the site. And that will be, as soon as we can get a copy of that from Tracker Archaeological Associates, that'll be placed in the appendix, also in, at the town clerk's office. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? I put that as a minor because all of the critical resources are not going to be touched. There'll be nothing done on the floodplain, there'll be nothing done on the wetlands, there'll be nothing done to historic resources, because we didn't find any. The natural resources, flora and fauna, this area has been cleared for the most part. This is secondary growth. The archaeological and cultural resources did a shovel test every 200 feet. I believe in around the houses, they did around 50 feet, and they came up without any significant article. So we would say we're pretty clean that we won't have to go into any further investigation on that. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion? This one, I think we probably could go with a large to medium. So I'm debating whether I check the right box here. So we can still require that they do the greater work on that. And the last one says, will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And I don't think that there's a significant impact that will come from this. So that's the part two. These are the things that we've asked them to take a look at. They'll be creating a part three and coming back to us with all of these answers, and it'll be all rolled into the zone change report.
Mr. Lang, if I may, if you're on the fence whether to categorize one as a small impact or a moderate to large, I would suggest that you recommend the moderate to large so it can be studied. So I believe that's question number 10?
Yes.
So it would be your request to the board that that be
Modified.
Checked as moderate to large?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Okay, and now we will hear, go ahead.
Mr. Lang, there are two, even though we're holding, the town board received two separate petitions from adjacent landowners, and we're conducting a joint hearing on both. Are your part twos identical for both?
They're identical.
With question number 10, put
We'll modify that on as well.
On the erosion, put to large and moderate versus minor.
If I might add one other more thing? This map shows the densities of different developments in the surrounding area. The ones that are in the pinkish color are in Clarkstown. The ones that are in the yellow color are in either Spring Valley or Town of Ramapo. And I note that there's a new project that's proposed here, and that one is in Spring Valley. And that one is going to be at 32 units an acre in Spring Valley. If you look at the existing ones, it's 10 units an acre, 17 units an acre, 16 units an acre, 36 units an acre, 30, 25, and 5. For the ones in Clarkstown, we have 4, 32, 15, 17, 16, 10, 6. So we can see that the area is not strictly a single-family home area. The surrounding area has quite a number of multiple-family dwellings. I just wanted to point that out as to determining the character of the neighborhood. It is a mixed transition area.
Mr. Lang, if I may go back just for a second. On item nine on the impact assessment on the EF part twos, it appears that on the one prepared for the Colashore application, the check there is moderate to large impact may occur.
What was the number nine? I'm sorry.
Number nine, will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna? But on the Pascak, on the Muncie Lumber petition, you have small to no or small impact.
The Colashore portion is directly adjacent to the creek. It actually goes on the other side of the creek, so the potential was higher there than it was on the Muncie Lumber side.
So that's the only distinction between the two?
Between the two, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lang. Okay, with that, we will now hear from everyone that is here. And our first speaker will be the honorable supervisor from the Town of Clarkstown, Alex Gromek.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Supervisor. And I want to thank your council members, your town clerk, and your town attorney for extending us these courtesies. You know, it's not often that other towns come to another town to raise concerns, but certainly your willingness to listen to the concerns of the Town of Clarkstown and its residents are heartening. We also appreciate the fact that your town attorney has been very supportive in working with our attorney, Amy Mealy, who's here tonight to provide needed information, as well as our town planner. And we also appreciate the fact that you've indicated that this will continue to another meeting, which will give certainly more time for the town to gather some additional information. Just a couple of points before I read a prepared statement. Some of what I say may not be applicable based on some new information that came in, but we would still like to put it into the record. We'd also like to note that we still believe there's some information that our town planner, Joe Simos, is looking to receive, and perhaps I could suggest that he call your town planner, planning department, and maybe they could sit down and just get it. Because I think if we get some of that information, it certainly may clarify a lot of the concerns that he has and in the town and start to
Absolutely.
Kind of limit the scope of the discussion. But let me just state for the record that our town board is concerned about it. Councilman Homan is here. Councilwoman Shirley Lasker spoke last week, and I know Councilwoman Hausner and Borelli could not be here tonight and in conferring with Mr. Homan. I think out of the respect for the amount of people that are here, in your time, we would just read this statement, and it would cover all five town board members, and then allow others to speak. And certainly with another meeting, there's ample time for some additional dialogue.
And, Mr. Supervisor, we did also include at the last meeting your resolution that was voted unanimously against this project, and it's part of the record of this hearing. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Well, we're here tonight as concerned residents and public officials, and we certainly had come here urging you to reject the proposed zone change, but are heartened by the fact that this will be a continuation so that more information and the flow of discussion can continue regarding the comprehensive plan amendments that are before you tonight. As I noted, I know Councilman Homan and Councilwoman Lasker spoke at your previous meeting on behalf of the town and pointed out in their public comments at the last meeting, the proposed amendments would pave the way for an extremely dense development, the Pascak Ridge subdivision that would have significant and adverse impacts on our residents. The amendments before you tonight would rezone approximately 28.5 acre parcel adjacent to our border from medium-density residential, which would have allowed for approximately 40 single-family homes on the third of a lot, to a high-density residential complex, which could accommodate approximately 210 units with as many as four to six bedrooms. Just one clarification, because there is a lot of talk about the four to six, I know that was discussed that there's four bedrooms and two bedrooms, and I guess the only question that I would have is, is four plus two, six? Is it one owner, or is it four and two separate owners?
That's a good question. I was trying to get down to that. Since it's 210 separate units, it is four, three to four bedrooms that are 105 units, and then separate ownership on 105 units, that would be two bedrooms.
That is correct.
Okay.
Because, again, just so you know, the reason that I think there's a lot of talk about the four to six is it is information that was gleaned from some of the reports, so that clarification certainly would be helpful. The Town of Ramapo's current comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2004, did not recommend any zone change in this area. Indeed, the goal of the plan stated succinctly as follows, and I quote, "to promote a balanced pattern of land use that primarily encourages the concentration of future development in areas with adequate infrastructure and facilities so as to make efficient utilization of the transportation network and infrastructure, to preserve the town's environmental and scenic resources, and to provide a variety of additional housing opportunities in areas of the town most appropriate for such development." And again, we in Clarkstown agree with the statement in your comprehensive plan that this parcel should not have that type of a density. The town plan goes on to describe it as medium residential zoning districts, which would, which is what the property issue here is talked about. Quote, "These are areas generally represented, that represent a transition from the most intense areas of Muncie and the Village of Spring Valley, and the lowest-density subdivision areas to the west and the north of them. The majority of the properties within the zoning district are proposed to retain its current zoning designation, with the exception of a certain area within Muncie, which are designated with higher-density residential land use categories in order to address the housing needs of the town." So those are statements in the comprehensive plan that we note and sort of, and realize that this is contradictory, the zone change, and certainly would like you to take particular notice to the plan. So in 2004, the town was proposing to keep this area zoned as a medium-density residential area and place the higher-density areas in other parts of the town. So I guess the question is, what has changed? What changes, what changed other than the fact that perhaps the developer has put in an application? What analysis has been done to determine the current zoning, which was upheld, and the town's comprehensive planning process is no longer appropriate for this area? As the board is aware, the town is under, of course, no legal obligation to entertain and consider an application for a zone change. There is no requirement that the matter ever be scheduled for a public hearing or be heard by a board. But having said that, we understand that this is certainly the topic of what we are all focusing on, and we certainly look forward to additional information. However, if the board does decide to consider the applicant's request, the proposed use of the property must be thoroughly analyzed pursuant to the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the law that was enacted by the New York State Legislature to ensure that all agencies conduct their affairs with an awareness that they are the stewards of air, water, land, and living resources, and that they have an obligation to protect the environment for the use and enjoyment of this and future generations, end quote. To the best of our knowledge, to date, the Town of Clarkstown has not been provided with any secret documentation in connection with the application or the proposed change to the Town of Ramapo's comprehensive plan. The Town of Clarkstown has requested these and other documents pursuant to the Freedom of Information law. And again, I want to thank your town attorney, because I know in his discussions with Amy Mealy, our town attorney, he did say that he would be glad to provide any documentation that we need to do our independent review. And we do appreciate Ramapo that has agreed to make these documents available for our planning board, our planning department, and our staff. Finally, we believe that the approval of this application will have a significant and adverse effect on our environmental and our traffic patterns, particularly with respect to the traffic and drainage. I know that your traffic engineer has talked a little bit about some information tonight that we were not aware of, and again, I would ask that perhaps that information, because we are indeed very concerned about the traffic patterns, the local roads, what that could mean to the Town of Clarkstown if there would be an opportunity for us to have some clarification on exactly how the plan is laid out and how those traffic patterns would impact our Clarkstown residents. And should Ramapo be inclined to consider the application favorably, we certainly urge that the action be deemed a Type 1 action under seeker, and that the environmental impact statement be prepared so that any adverse impacts will be mitigated to the fullest extent possible. So that is a statement jointly by Mr. Homan, myself, Councilwoman Lasker, Hausner, and Borelli, our planning department. But more importantly, again, we are heartened by the fact that there is no action being taken tonight by the Town of Ramapo, and we certainly want to thank you for having an open dialogue as we move forward. We think there's some important information that is forthcoming, and we certainly would like the opportunity to have that made available to us so that we can work in a cooperative measure that is both positive for the Town of Ramapo and the Town of Clarkstown. And lastly, as I said, it is highly unusual, I know, when other elected officials come to other towns and oppose or raise questions. I just want you to know that we do appreciate the courtesies that you have afforded us, and certainly that should we in Clarkstown ever do anything that has a concern to Ramapo, you should know that our town board and our planning board would certainly be glad to have you come and explain those concerns, and we would certainly be very respectful as you have been to us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready?
Cop, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've been ready for a long time.
Rich Cop, I live in Squires Gate Development
Sure.
In the Village of Suffering. I'm here to talk to the town about flood mitigation.
In Squires Gate and
In Squires Gate.
Then you have to wait until they, we'll have a public participation portion, and we'll discuss that.
Okay.
All right? That's fine. We're glad you're here. Okay, the next one is? Mr. Burgess?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joseph Burgess. I'm the principal of the firm Burgess, excuse me, Burgess Associates. We're planners in New Jersey, representing many municipalities in New Jersey, as well as in New York State. I know you've heard from my associate, my wife, last week or last meeting. I was heartened to hear that there's a revised comprehensive amendment plan that was prepared just, I guess, this week. Because we'd like to take a look at that, because in looking at the previous document that had been prepared, it raised a number of questions. One of the things typically we do in comprehensive planning analysis is assess the overall impacts on the community, particularly concerned about population impacts, school impacts, infrastructure impacts, and the like. And we found that the comprehensive plan really lacked that information. We also felt it lacked a lot of information regarding the criteria for placement of multifamily housing in the community. The comprehensive plan from 2004 does in fact identify seven or eight very specific criteria that one is supposed to utilize to assess whether or not a site is appropriate for multifamily housing. And I was intrigued that Mr. Lang's report had concluded in a rather net opinion fashion that the site met most of the criteria. But when I read the criteria, I found that overwhelmingly, the criteria are not in fact being met. For example, it talks about permitting multifamily housing where there is a sufficient size and dimension to accommodate development. But when examining the concept plan that was prepared, we found that fully 24 of the buildings did not meet some of the bulk requirements of the zone in which they're seeking to be located in. So that would suggest that they cannot, or do not meet that one criteria. A second criteria talks about frontage on a state or county highway. That is not the case here. So again, that criteria is not being met. The third, in fact, on that issue, the 2004 document is replete with comments emphasizing the need to be located on state or county highway, so it's not just simply mentioned in the section on, regarding the list of criteria. The third issue talks about pedestrian access to community shopping and mass transit facilities. The document actually points out that in this particular area So again, here's another criteria that is not being met by this property. That is an issue that is commented upon in two other sets of criteria, this issue of pedestrian access to community shopping. In addition to that, there's an issue where the criteria specifically talks about a site must have ready access or connectability to existing water and sewer infrastructure. And yet, when you look at the county report, which I'm sure you'll get into later this evening, they make great emphasis on the fact that there is not that kind of connectivity readily available. Finally, the final criteria talks about unencumbered environmental constraints on a piece of property. And yet, when you look at the maps and when you look at the county report, you find that there is a number of issues associated with environmentally sensitive features that are notable. So consequently, out of these seven criteria, at best, we could find one that is affirmed by this application. And when one, I'm not sure how one can conclude that meeting one of seven criteria means that you've met the majority of the criteria stipulated in the report. And I guess that's a long way of saying my first question to the planner, is how did he make that conclusion? So maybe he can answer that?
No, this is not a public, this is not an answer debate. This is a public hearing. This is where we hear from the public.
Okay, may I have a few more moments then to finish my thoughts?
Sure, go right ahead.
Thank you. There was a lot of comment about the 105 duplexes. It was unclear the size of the units themselves. In one instance, there was a reference to 1,200 square feet, but I'm not certain if that referred to the two-bedroom unit or one floor of a two-bedroom unit.
Sounds clearly the two-bedroom on the first floor.
Okay, and then the question, it begs the question, what's the size of the upper unit? And I think that needs to be answered. But more importantly than that, is there a definitive bedroom distribution count for that three slash four-bedroom unit? Because in terms of impacts, obviously, if you have a three-bedroom unit, there's a certain level of impact. But if there's a four-bedroom unit, there's another level of impact. And there is no indication that, at least in a theoretical sense, all of the upper-floor units, all 105, could in fact be four-bedroom units. That obviously has an impact on a variety of infrastructure and community facilities There was a reference by Mr. Ziegler, I believe, and he had indicated that they're going to amend this plan to indicate that all variances will be removed from the plan. However, in examining this plan, it would appear that the only way to do that, at least in this kind of a configuration, would be a reduction in unit count. And I would like to know if that reduction in unit, to what extent would that reduction in unit count be? And if not, will we be seeing a new plan to confirm that, in fact, any adjustment will not result in the need for variance relief? The final question relates to parking. On the current plan, they are short on parking. They show, I believe it's 290 parking spaces plus an additional 60-some of future parking. But in examining the plan, there is no indication of where these future parking spaces are. We counted up the spaces in our office, we find 290 parking spaces, no more, no less. So it's questionable where these future parking spaces are, if they do in fact exist. They clearly do not show in the plan. And that's a critical issue, because while we're dealing with 210 units and 290 parking spaces, the code theoretically would require the applicant to provide in excess of 400 parking spaces. That's a significant shortfall that could have a spillover effect to the surrounding community, and I think that also needs to be commented upon in a future meeting. Finally, I just want, I'm not certain if someone from the county is here or not, they had raised a number of significant issues about the goals and objectives set forth in the comprehensive plan. And I think each and every one of those, because I don't want to steal their thunder, but each and every one of those goals and objectives needs to be commented upon, because in each and every one of those instances, whereas your comprehensive plan identifies goals and objectives, they are not being furthered by this application, and in fact, in many instances, they are in fact being degraded. And consequently, I think answers to the questions raised in the county letter need to be addressed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1516.11][1516.11](APPLAUSE).
Or Arlen, I'm sorry.
My name is Arlen Yalcutt. I live on Springbrook Road, actually 12 Springbrook Road, which is the entrance to Springbrook Road. And my wife and I have lived there for 41 years. I am one of the people who has actually walked through that property when it was just plain woods, and it's an accurate depiction of that. I haven't been there maybe 15 years because I don't walk quite as well as I used to. But the fact is, the part that's woods was fine, the part that used to be, I think it was called the Circle Pool, is in total disrepair. There is a pathway in there, and there's also, it could be access either through Ewing or down the Pascak Road as a means of access into the property itself. Now, we've just heard that apparently they no longer intend to use Springbrook Road as an access into the project. If that's correct, you've solved one of the problems. However, my concern is, I assume that there'll be a lag time between the start of the project, if it's approved, and the time that it can be completed, usually taking somewhere between a year or two years. And the question is, how will the project be constructed if it is in fact approved? If they intend to use Springbrook Road as the access road to bring construction equipment in, that is totally unacceptable to the people who live on Springbrook Road, which is a narrow road, as is. There is parking on one side, no parking on the other side. But again, we're talking about a road which is only 29 and a half feet wide. So bringing in big construction vehicles, aside from the noise and the inconvenience to the people there, would also probably destroy the present road surface as it exists in the Clarkstown side. In addition to that, although our children are long gone and in other climes, there are quite a number of children who live on that particular street, and quite a number of them play on that street. And I don't know what hours of the time they would, if in fact there's any intention to use that for construction purposes, that would be completely disruptive to these children who are there, and they have a right to enjoy what it is that their parents bought. Because what we bought was a no-outlet street. Everybody, including me, way back when, we knew it was going to be a no-outlet street. It was designed that way. And people have moved in, we've had two additional generations who have moved in, and I believe everybody who moved in believed that that's what it was going to be. So if it's to be approved at all, if there's an understanding that it will not be used except for emergency circumstances, and there would be a gate, that's another story. But if it's intended to be used for construction purposes, or as an accessway into a new development in another town, that would not in any way be acceptable to the people who live there, who invested their money, their time, and their effort with the expectation that they would receive what it is that they have now. Now, in terms of the zoning, the area that was originally called Forest Brook Estates was also called Hillcroft. And the original zoning there was R15. Now, if you go through the area, you'll see that it doesn't appear to be R15 because we have cluster housing there. However, a substantial portion of the area that was there was dedicated to the town, so we have little park areas and things which haven't been fully developed and which cannot be built on. And in fact...